Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry that we're running a little late here, but that's my fault because the Warden's away and I'm in the chair today. I would just like to say the Warden is somewhere between here and the Atlantic Ocean on his motorcycle, and hopefully he's enjoying himself, although we heard that it was cold and wet where he was. So with that said, I'd like everyone to stand for a moment of silent reflection. Moving on to the agenda, if we have anything to raise and report.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. We do, we have four matters to report on. One, County Council provided staff with instructions in regards to collective bargaining with the ONA Bargaining Agents Union with regards to collective agreements at MGM and North Lampton Lodge and Lampton Meadowview Villa. Secondly, County Council heard an update from staff on the status of collective bargaining with our SEIU Bargaining Agent Union, whom represent the county paramedics. Thirdly, County Council provided legal counsel with instructions in regards to the handling of ongoing filed appeals regarding the county official plan. And then fourthly and lastly, County Council provided staff with instructions in regards to the potential acquisition of a property located at 190 Front Street North in the city of Sarnia.
Okay, thank you. We don't need to do a motion on those. Okay. This morning, we have three delegations, and I would entertain a motion to welcome Mr. Sandy Marshall from BIC. Second, there, councillor Bruce Witz. Mr. Marshall, all those in favor? And that's Kerry, thank you.
Thank you, councillors, for allowing me to come today and speak to you and give an update on where we are at bioindustrial innovation in Canada. As you know, I was here a year ago, how does this work? I was here a year ago in March to give you an update on what we were doing at that time, as well as discuss with you the opportunity to provide us some funding to be able to deliver on our mandate. And so this is the next opportunity for me to come and tell you what's happened in the last 15 months or so. So just as a reminder here, this is just BIC's vision and mission here. We are Economic Development Agency, or not-for-profit, and you know, we're here focusing on providing advice, services, and critical investment to early-stage companies across southern Ontario with a particular focus here in Sarnia-Lampton. We basically deliver on this through three ways. Our strategic plan, which was developed in 2016 for the period 2016 to 2020, was built on three pillars. First pillar is cluster building, which has been focused on the continued development of the Sarnia-Lampton hybrid chemistry cluster that we have here in the region. And there's a number of other pieces here. We do manage our investment fund, which was the basis for our discussion a year ago, and we continue now give you a bit of an update on the status of some of those investments here in a minute. And the other prime piece we do is we provide advice and services to support the commercialization of early-stage companies who are working in clean, green, and sustainable technologies. I think it would be amiss if I didn't recognize the, our collaborative partners that we have in the Sarnia-Lampton area. Certainly, the four partners that are noted here on this slide besides us are very critical to delivery of the things we do, and we work very closely with them. Sarnia-Lampton Economic Partnership is a very important partner for us and has been instrumental in helping us get set up and continue to move forward. The Sarnia-Lampton Research, Western Sarnia-Lampton Research Park is a key asset that we have in our community, and the support that comes through Catherine and the team at the research park is very critical in providing assets and support for the activities we do. Lampton College has grown from a small college to a college that has become one of the strongest research, applied research colleges in Ontario and in Canada, and have played a very strong role in the areas of wastewater management, bioindustrial processing, energy, and so on. And the last partners here are the industrial parks, primarily the two parks we have in the Chemical Valley at Transalta and Erlangseo, but also the other industrial parks that we have further downriver owned by BIOX. So just an update on the programs that we do. The first program that we just have wrapped up with funding from the Agriculture and Agri-Food Canada, it was our Bioproducts Ag Sci Cluster. This is a research cluster supported by the federal government that supports bioproducts with a benefit to agriculture. We managed this on behalf of the government, and this, the first round of this cluster under Growing Forward II just closed down at the end of March of 2018. And we've just been refunded to support the next five years of research activities in this space from AAFC, and right now, we're in the process of starting to put contribution agreements in place. We will be sponsoring and supporting a number of projects across Canada, but I will say that the great majority of these projects because, will be in Ontario because of the strength of the bioproducts sector here. The second piece here is our current funding under the Centre for Commercialization of Chemistry Innovation, and that's COMSI. This is the basis, the most important driver we have to do economic development, and as you can see here, this is a $27 million initiative that is wrapping up in March of 2019, so we're in the last year of our COMSI initiative. And there's really the two elements to it, our investment fund, as $11 million investment fund, and the $60 million we use for commercialization of various projects. And again, we would not be able to provide these investments if it was not for the great support from the County of Lampton. The $2.5 million loan you provided us in 2018 has been instrumental in us being able to continue to support companies in this space, and I will go through a few of them on the next slide. I'm here today to follow up on the second part of the discussion we had a year ago, and that is, there was a potential for a further $2 million from the county. I'm here to say that we're looking only for a half, for half a million dollars of that $2 million. The reason we have reduced that amount is that we've, we are directing some of the monies we had from FedDev towards projects so that we can enhance the probability of success of some of these investments and projects we're working on. And again, I'll talk a bit about, more about that. But with that additional half million that we, we've asked for as part of the package, it will allow us to set up our investment fund to a maximum of $9.5 million, which we will then continue to use for investments in early-stage companies. I wanted to give a little bit of an overview of some of the investments that we've done that have had direct relevance here to Sarnia-Lampton. We have, there's four of them here that I've listed. We have completed our investments in Comet BioRefining, and I think they're well-known. They're converting agricultural biomass to sugars for the use in the bioeconomy. Origin Materials is a second company that we've completed our investments in, and these, this company is building, is producing intermediate chemicals which can be used to make bio-based plastics and other materials, again, using various forms of biomass. It can be agricultural, it can be starches, it can be wood, and so on. The third company here is Ubiquity Solar. They've been around Sarnia now for quite some time. They're in the process of finalizing the construction of their pile plant, and that is, will be located at the Transalta lands, and that investment we've done is complete. The most recent investment we've announced is the investment in Benefuels. This is a biodiesel company that is going to build a fairly significant modular biodiesel plant on the Erlangseo lands here in Sarnia. This investment is not yet closed, it's been announced, but we're in the final portions of closing that investment. So the request I have for the half million dollars from the county is relating to, is leveraging against the investments we have in Comet, Origin, and Ubiquity Solar. Outside of investments, significant projects that we've supported in the region include our work with the Cellular Sugar Producers Cooperative. We've been supporting them on their marketing and membership drive, helping them to promote the activities they're doing together with Comet BioRefining, to be able to complete their membership drive, to raise the amount of capital that's necessary for their partnership with Comet, as well as assuring that the biomass is available so that Comet plant can operate at capacity. The second group we worked with is the Ontario Sugar Beet Producers Cooperative. As you know, there are 10,000 acres of sugar beets grown in Sarnia-Lampton, but they all go to Michigan to be, to produce sugar for the US food market. The sugar beet growers in Ontario can't expand because there's nowhere for them to take their sugar, or their sugar beets, and they want to expand their acreage because this is a very profitable crop for them. And the one opportunity for them is to produce sugar beet, sugar, or sucrose, and put that into the bioeconomy. We've completed our study with them. The business plan for the construction of a sugar beet crushing plant looks fairly attractive, and now we're starting to look at other aspects of market and so on. So that's a project we've completed. Origin Materials has completed the construction of their $6 million pile plant, which is at the research park in Sarnia. This pile plant was relocated from Tennessee back up into Canada, and they're now operating that pile plant and doing application development for their products at the Sarnia-Lampton Research Park. Advanced Chemical Materials is another project we supported. This company is taking the CO2 out of flue gas from places like the Transalta stacks. This would be very good for traditional chemical companies, taking that CO2 and converting it through a series of processes to make methanol, which then can be sold on the market as a renewable chemical. We are working with them to validate their economic model and to do so, and to validate some of the base engineering of their project. So this is a very interesting project for us. The last one is Forward Water. This is our recent investment we've worked in. This is a group out of Kingston, Ontario, and they have a forward osmosis technology which allows them to produce materials that are, to purify water. They are moving their pile plant to Sarnia, it is in Sarnia, and we will be setting that up in the research park. One last slide here, may I? Okay, thank you. There's one very important project that we have, that we're moving forward on at the moment, and this is the development of an anaerobic digester to be constructed at the Erlangseo site. This is a really great community project because it actually allows us to solve problems for a number of community members. First example here would be Comet and BioAmber. It allows them to treat their rich waste stream to be able to produce renewable natural gas rather than having it treated through wastewater treatment plants and just have the value of the carbon lost. The second benefit out of this is that renewable natural gas is very much in demand at a very high price, and Union Gas is partnering with us on this project to take that renewable natural gas and put it back into the pipeline to be sold across North America where they can. The third, obviously, partner here is Erlangseo and Transalta. This asset would allow them to continue to grow the bioeconomy on those sites because this asset would be able to treat the rich carbon streams, wastewater carbon streams that come from them. The final two groups that have the potential to benefit from this project is the city of Sarnia and the county of Lampton, in that this site is, one of the plans in the site is to build a 40,000 ton per year processing plant for organic waste from wastewater treatment, or from, uh, waste, from landfills. So things like green bin programs and so on can divert these organic wastes to this plant, and they can, they can process those, produce high-value natural gas, and then the digestate can be used as organic fertilizers, be put back on the farmlands around southern Ontario and particularly Lampton County. So this project here, there is proposed legislation which, which would impact the city of Sarnia in this space, to be able to divert organics out of their landfill. There is no such requirement that we can see for the county, but on the same token, we are, as a community, Sarnia-Lampton, we've been promoting ourselves as a bioeconomy, as moving towards sustainability as a community, and there is certainly interest in some of my discussions with staff in the county, that there may be the opportunity here in a very cost-effective way to be able to start diverting some of our organics, both from the city and from the county, and using it as feedstocks to produce value-added renewable natural gas. And so from that standpoint, I'm, I'm looking to the county to say, to the council to say, is this something that you would like us to continue to work with, with your, with your staff, to see if there's an opportunity for us, cost-effectively, to be able to divert some of the organics you have in the county into more valuable products as part of a broader strategy of the bioeconomy in this region? In summary, so in summary, wrapping up the next year, we're going to wrap up COMSI, which is our project that will finish in March of 2019. We are looking to complete our investments. We right now have sufficient funding to do five more investments. We are looking for the additional funding from the county to be able to complete seven more investments. And then the remainder of the funding will be used to support projects, and that would allow us to fully utilize the $12 million that we've received from the, from FedDev. And then the last piece here is, we're not going to end this in, in March of 2019. We are now working with FedDev for another five-year mandate to take what we're doing today and grow it further. It really will seem quite similar for us here in Sarnia-Lampton, it'll continue to be the development of clusters and supporting the development of value chains here. The two slight differences that are happening, are proposed to happen in the next five years is that we'll help other air regions in Ontario, southern Ontario, such as Brockville-Maitland, to start doing some of the similar things we're doing. And the second part is, we're going to start partnering with a lot of brand owners like Ford, Nestle, and Danone, to start creating value pull-through, so that instead of just making products and trying to push them into the market, we're actually working with the brand owners to pull those products into the market. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I have a couple of questions for our speaker. Mr. Marshall, in your portfolio of investments that you have, how many of the projects that you have on the books are still in the kirsch-burning stage and may require further financial support in case the commercial banks will consider it too high-risk? Do you have a timeline? And how is your protocol of dealing with these companies? Do they come to you two years before time when they're going to burn all the cash and they may need further support before they become commercialized? Because that, that of course is, it's happening, this startup, or close to startup or pre-commercialization stage.
Our mandate, or our, our goal for our investment fund is fairly patient. We look to double our funds, our double our investments every 10 years. So if you take some of the investment, venture capital companies, or firms that are out there today, they would want to double their money in five to seven years, where we tend to say eight to 12. So that would suggest that we're more patient in, in the types of investments we do than, than some of the VCs, and that means that we're often investing a little earlier stage than, than some of the VCs. That requires us to be more patient. That also means that in most cases, and I would say, I'm thinking about our portfolio right now, I'd say the greatest majority of our, of our companies in our portfolio will need further investment rounds before they fully commercialize. So that will, they will need more funding. Sometimes we participate in those, sometimes we don't, it depends on the nature of it. We are trying to do more investments in more downstream projects, so closer to, more closer to commercialization so that we can generate more revenue earlier, so that we can continue to reinvest in new companies in the future.
I have a follow-up question on the flip side of the coin. In your portfolio, how close, how many of the investments you have are near the actually cash flow back situation to pay back to the, to the shareholders, or perhaps realizing the value through the sale, whatever? And also, you mentioned, I'm actually really happy about the business model you carry, which is, you get there before the venture capital comes in. Do you have many venture capital companies who actually come to you, try to acquire your possessions smelling the future commercial success?
First, we have formal MOUs with five venture capital firms, Cycle Capital, Arc Turn, Fraser McKenzie Merchant Capital, Sophie Nova, and for the life of me, it escapes me, the fifth one right now. Sophie Nova has been actively invested in Comet, BioAmber. We have had both Arc Turn and Cycle come to us with companies they've invested in and asked us to participate in rounds with them, so we actively do invest, and we'll go to them with our investments and try to draw them into investments that we might be leading.
That's one more. You mentioned BioAmber, and I know one of the venture capital, I know Mike Baker is one of the guys, I don't know, the name of the venture capital, it has a name, in the name something water, but anyway, I know they, personal, this particular guy told me, you know, they, they pretty well not going to put any more money in BioAmber, but...
Yeah, there's a number of investors. BioAmber is publicly traded. There's, there can be many different investors that have large blocks of shares that obviously aren't returning very well at the moment.
Deputy Warden, McCharles, and members of County Council, I'm very excited with what is happening with the BioInnovation Centre, and particularly what you've been doing, Mr. Marshall. It's a, it's a real success story. One thing that really perked my ears up was the anaerobic digester. I think that is extremely exciting, and I've heard from many citizens in our communities that they want green bins, and they didn't know what we would be doing with those products. And now, this is making itself evident that that certainly is a highly sought-after commodity, and we need to get into that for so many reasons. The other thing, though, you did mention was that you're attacking, or going after companies that are already producing product, and I was wondering if you had any suggestion with regard to the single-use plastic dilemma that we are facing, and if this is in conjunction with what you're looking at with products for, Danone is a perfect example, with individual yogurt packages and that kind of thing.
A company called Green Mantra. Green Mantra is a company out of Branford who, who processes recycled polyethylene and polypropylene and turns it into high-value-added waxes that go into roofing, applique roofing, and various plastic applications. So we think these recycle technologies are right at the verge of breakthrough, and Green Mantra is generating revenue today. They're not profitable yet, but they're generating revenue, but they are also creating a market for recycled plastics. And if you really want to divert and get plastics out of landfills and out of oceans and out of all these different places around the world, you actually have to have markets and places that it can go. It can't be just bailed up and stuck in a warehouse. It used to be just bailed up, stuck, and put on a boat to China. China stopped doing that now. So we need to have pathways to take those plastics and convert them into value-added products. So until you have those technologies in place like Green Mantra has, it's really hard to develop the value chains because there's not enough value there to cause people to start collecting it. So it's a little chicken and egg. You can start to bail it all up and collect it all, but where do you put it? Or you can have the technologies that develop all the great technologies and how to convert it into something value-added, but where do you get it? So one of the things I believe is a significant value of BIC is that we work along the value chain. So we work with the suppliers, and companies like Revital are very important players in this space to be able to develop the supply chains to provide these plastics, and then you've got to have the converters, and then you've got to have the people downstream who can take those products and put them into value-added products. And really, our role is to connect all those together and facilitate the connectivity there, and to try and do it within Canada. And that's really a priority for us when we say in Canada, because our chemical industry, a lot of the value chains have been, have been destroyed in Canada. So basically, we produce products, we export them to the US, they do a bunch of modifications to it, and then they send it back to us, and then we put it into a car. One of our priorities is start to build those, fill those holes in Canada with companies that are here.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Sandy, thanks for the presentation, always interesting, of course. You talked about anaerobic digesters. We applied for funding through the municipality for some funding from the FCM system. They said that we were too small, so you might want to be able to pursue that in accordance with the County of Lampton's grant procurement people to see about getting a grant funding for it, because I'm sure that collectively, we'd all be plenty big enough to be able to make a case for it.
These close by that are looking for solutions. So I think this is part of, part of what we're doing is trying to connect with these other communities as well to become a solution for, for the London's and so on as well.
Thank you, Deputy Warden, McCharles. Thank you for that excellent presentation. As you know, I've been interested in this whole process. My favorite question is, when will Comet get started, and do you have enough acres of either straw or wheat straw to get going? And when will we actually see some product out of the end pipe?
We have enough, we have enough participation now, I believe. I'm not as directly involved as I was before, so I'm giving you a bit of perception, not actuality anymore. We now have enough biomass to be able to make the project go, and I believe Comet is, is, is comfortable with the availability of straw and cornstover to move the project forward. So right now, they're working on their detailed engineering, and it is my understanding that they will look to close their final financing sometime middle fall of this year, which will then create the financing to start moving forward. That's what I understand. So if that, so if that construction happens, you can expect that that construction normally is a 12 to 18-month timeframe, so my expectation would be there would be a need for a harvest in, in 2019.
If not, thanks, Mr. Marshall. That's great, great report, presentation. Thank you. Just before we move on to the next delegation, I was to announce that there's some testing improvements to live streaming services today, and we don't anticipate any difficulties, but if we do, we apologize for that, but we're testing some new, some new streaming services in this, in this meeting. The next presentation is from Dr. Ranaday, the Medical Officer Health. We welcome her. Could I have a motion to invite Mr. Ranaday and to councillor Gillis and councillor Gilliland? All those in favor? And that's Kerry, thanks. Dr. Ranaday?
Thank you, Deputy Warden, and good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me here to talk a little bit about mental health in Lampton County. I have two primary purposes for being here today. The first is really to share with you some highlights of a mental health report that we published a few weeks ago in conjunction with Mental Health Awareness Week. And the second is to outline a few recommendations for sort of a role that County Council could play in promoting mental health in Lampton County. play in promoting mental health in Lampton County. So the report that we, that we put out focused on a few areas such as mental well-being, mental health literacy, mental illness, mental health services, and mental health promotion. I think it was a fairly comprehensive report, and we looked at lots of different data sources, including trying to understand what the lived experience of mental illness is in Lampton County, and we have some very rich stories from that in the report as well. But I think the picture on average is mostly encouraging. I think it's, it's, we see that in terms of mental well-being, can everybody hear me? I'm not sure if that's working. Yeah, okay, good. We see in terms of mental well-being that most Lampton County residents have very good or excellent self-reported mental health, and that's comparable with, with the numbers that we're seeing in Ontario and the rest of Canada. Again, though, there are some pockets, so people who are less likely to report good mental health are younger residents, people living with low financial resources or with chronic physical conditions. So those are things that you would expect to see. But we also know that we have a fairly resilient community. That's a very encouraging finding, too. About 90% of our residents report a high level of resilience, which is that ability to sort of bounce back from things when, when they're not working your way or to cope with stressors in your life. And again, people who have had difficulty with mental illness in the past are less likely to report being resilient. That's also something we would expect. Mental health literacy is an area where we talk about the knowledge that people have about basic mental health and well-being and their ability to find information and access services. And so we see that mental health literacy on average is higher in Lampton County than in the rest of Ontario, and many residents feel very comfortable knowing where to find information on mental health. Certainly, we hear stories about how system navigation is a challenge, but we also heard lots of stories about how when somebody is in the system, they get referred fairly easily. So once they make the first point of contact, either with a, with a family physician or a primary care provider or a mental health service provider, then they're quickly moved through to whatever part of the system they need to be in. So that was also very encouraging. We also know that younger people have more mixed feelings about seeking help. So many that were surveyed from our schools have said that they thought about seeking help for mental health but didn't really know where to turn. In terms of stigma, we know that there is a stigma associated with mental illness. We think that that stigma is decreasing and has been decreasing over time in conjunction with improved awareness of, of mental health and its relationship to overall health. So one in five Lampton County residents report ever having diagnosed, ever having been diagnosed with a mental illness. That's a very comparable statistic to the rest of Canada, something we would expect. And those more likely to have been diagnosed are women, people under 44, and people with low household income, as well as people with chronic disease, chronic diseases. But we do have reports in this, we do have information in this report that suggests that the picture of stigma is changing. People are experiencing less stigma. Certainly, there was one comment that says it, it seems like it's, it's easier now to get help for mental illness than it was, you know, 20 years ago when the person who was telling us said that they had issues in high school. So the, these are encouraging findings that I think we need to pay attention to and remind ourselves of every time there's a story that suggests that maybe we're, we're somehow worse off than, than other places in Ontario. So that was very encouraging for, for us to see. When we look at hospital visits and admissions, we see that the visits are increasing for mental health, and that is, you know, I think there are three potential reasons for that. One is improved awareness driving help-seeking, so that's positive, we want that. But the other pieces are that we know that not enough people have contact with primary care before they go to emergency rooms for mental health. So the statistic was quite alarming that I think 30 or 40% of people who visit emergency rooms for mental health here have not had previous contact with a primary care provider about that issue. So that's challenging when you see that the number of people visiting emergency departments is highest in that 15 to 24 age group, and the statistic is much higher than the rest of Ontario. So we need to pay attention to that population. And then the report just highlights what sectors are doing. We talked to our community partners in schools, we talked to our community partners in the justice system, and there are things that are happening which are really important to know about. Schools, workplaces, and also the healthcare system are really important settings for keeping people mentally well as opposed to just waiting until they have mental illness and moving them to treatment. And lots of work is happening in those areas which we've highlighted in our report. But there will be some continued investment needed to meet the demands for mental health care, as well as to think about prevention in different settings like offices and schools. The other part, the other reason that I'm here is to highlight a potential role for County Council. I think there are two sort of roles. One, in your political capacity to sort of endorse principles that highlight the importance of mental health. And so that's one of the recommendations I brought to you today, is a statement of seven sort of overarching principles that highlight how important mental health is to overall well-being. And the second role is sort of as an important employer in the area to support efforts to maintain and measure and improve mental health for the, for the staff of Lampton County. I'll just quickly run through the seven principles that, that were in the recommendations that you endorse. One is that mental health is more than just the absence of mental illness. That's the same as our definition for, for health in general. The second is that the foundations of social and emotional well-being start in early childhood, so we have a lot of work to do there, and that they need to be sustained through the rest of our lives. That mental health promotion should be integrated with public health and cross-sectoral in nature. That mental health and illness are constructed and experienced and viewed as different to physical health and illness. That's only just to say that we recognize that the two are interrelated, but there hasn't been enough research done into mental health compared with physical health. That mental health and mental illness are a dynamic balance so that there's a, there's a dual spectrum that we consider. You can be, you can have a mental illness and actually have good mental health with treatment, support, and all of those things. Similarly, you can have no diagnosed mental illness but have a, you know, a situation where you have poor mental health, and that, that these things are, happen in conjunction with each other. That we still need to work on stigma and that, you know, we need to do some mental health promotion at individual levels as well as in all different settings of society, so our workplaces and our, our healthcare settings, et cetera. So those are the basics of the report. I think County Council has a strong role to play in terms of endorsing those principles and supporting efforts by staff and taking a leadership role in, in highlighting the importance of mental health. And we in public health will continue to work on this issue. So thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Counselor Napper?
Yeah, thank you very much. It was very disturbing to see the, the numbers in lower area there, but I think we're very fortunate in our area around here, Petroy, Wyoming, Watford, Sinclair, that we have the Family Health Unit in Petroy, and they're very active in this. They've, some of us sit on that board of directors. We've moved dieticians around and brought in family people to, to deal with mental health. So I, I think we're very fortunate. I can understand why those numbers are higher here in, meeting the statistics in other places because of the, the efforts of the health unit and all the, the desire for everybody to work together, and it's really paying off. So I think, I think we're well ahead of the, the curve there.
Counselor Gillis?
Thank you, Deputy Warden McCharles, and thank you very much, Dr. Ranaday, for a very positive message that you're sending us. The one thing that I did want to bring up to you and ask for your advice is the gap that we have between the 15 and 24-year-olds. Is it because they don't want to go to their own physician? Or is it that we don't have the proper facilities in place in our high schools and in our colleges for people to access? And is there a stigma for accessing that? So can you suggest anything that we could do to perhaps have a better picture and a better way to treat those who need or offer help to those who need help?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. I think the, I think that the, one of the things that we really saw in this report is that while individuals might have a knowledge of where to find services, not enough people are confident that when they meet with an organization, that that organization is capable of handling their mental health needs. So what I mean by that is that schools, workplaces, and healthcare settings, not, although, you know, so for example, if you take family physicians and, and healthcare providers, many people thought that they were a top-of-mind resource. That's the place that they would go to the first. But then when you, when you go to the other side and say, how many people said that their family physician or their primary care provider had asked about their mental well-being in the last year? The numbers dropped dramatically. So people feel confident in knowing where to seek information, and institutions and organizations are not as prepared. So I think that the answer really lies in capacity building for schools, workplaces, and healthcare settings to address mental health issues.
Just a comment on the second last slide when you talked about, I can't remember exact words, but concern for the mental health of county staff. I would also like to say that could not not be in the staff of our individual municipalities.
I mean, I, I think that the, really the focus is look thinking about the county as a workplace and thinking about mental health interventions in the workplace. So it would be the recommendations that we would have for the county would equally apply to staff of municipalities.
Thank you, Deputy Warden McCharles. To you, Dr. Ranaday, I just want to bring to your attention, and I have appreciated the presentation here this morning, and I do believe that in generalities, there's lots of good news happening around our community. I have a concern that I do want to table, however, and that is for people who are cross-suffering from mental health and addictions. I hear frequently in the community that the lack of supervised, appropriate housing for people rocking between their addictions and the mental health and substance abuse, that they can't get off the treadmill. And I think that it's important for us to note and for us to be aware in this chamber that of equal importance, even in the provincial goal of affordable housing and a mix and a range of, of low-cost housing for people, that very often leaves people vulnerable on the street because they're in low-cost, unsupervised housing situations that is working against their ability to become well and safe and successful in society. So that, this is good news, but that's the other side of it that I don't think we can lose sight of. And when you live and work in parts of our city where that is a chronic problem, this report feels a little short to me. So I just need to bring that to your attention because I think many of my colleagues don't live in areas where that is going to present, and that is a huge problem that we need to co-address, and I know we're trying to do it, but I don't know what you have to say about that.
Thank you, Counselor. No, I think you're 100% right. I think what you're talking about links back to housing as a fundamental determinant of overall health. So when we do a report on mental health, we have to set some boundaries around that about what we, what information we collect and how, but I think that doesn't stop us from recognizing that the importance of housing as a critical determinant of health itself. And it's one of the reasons why I'm quite glad that, that, you know, public health and social services work so closely together, because I think that there are ways to, to improve that, improve upon that, but I don't think you can ever get away from that idea of housing as a critical determinant of health and that when you change the systemic nature of the housing structures as well as income structures and education structures, you have enormous impacts on health. So I mean, I think, thank you for bringing that up. I think that's very fair, and I think our work with, you know, social services to improve the housing picture is an important next step.
Dr. Ranaday, thank you very much for your presentation. Our next presentation is from, this is Margaret Bird, a motion to allow Counselor Arnold and Counselor Bruswitz, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Ms. Bird?
Just go ahead whenever you're ready, just press the little button there.
Can everybody hear me? Good. So good morning, Deputy Warden, County Councilors, County Staff Media, and Public Gallery. Thank you for the opportunity to present this morning. My name is Margaret Bird, and I live in Brights Grove. My topic is paper ballots and the upcoming municipal election. I realize that the county isn't responsible for elections, although the meeting to explain electronic voting was held in the county building. But this is a matter that affects us all, so I needed a place where all the county's mayors were together. Politically and democratically, we're all facing the most serious situation. Although each municipality is autonomously run, the entire County of Lampton has been convinced to go in together on using an electronic voting company, Intellivote, a company that is now out of country, so there's no focus on our domestic economy. Due diligence was not carried out. In 2016, Intellivote was already in receivership and subsequently sold to Skittle in Spain in the form of a four-year partnership. Intellivote had numerous supplier debts and was perpetually out of money. So why sign up for a business with them, especially one year after all this information was already public? 2004 to 2014, Intellivote received federal assistance from Atlantic Canada Opportunities Agency totaling $1,820,528 and a further $2.8 million from Nova Scotia Business in the form of an equity stake. Spanish firm Skittle wouldn't need Intellivote's debts or even its existing contracts. Maybe there's some weird financial gimmickry, like a tax avoidance scheme, but there's certainly no tangible benefit to Nova Scotia, whose taxpayers have now lost an entire $2.8 million. Setting aside the risks of election hacking, it made no sense to contract out the basic infrastructure of elections to private companies that can financially collapse in the lead-up to or even in the middle of an election. Local IT companies could have handled this entire project if considered the best route by the constituents after voting on this question in the 2018 ballot, the result of which could not have been acted upon until 2022. Under the Canadian Constitution, we have the right to vote, and we want our votes to count. Even a bank offers the ATM or a bank teller. Voters deserve the same consideration: e-voting if everyone has agreed, and paper ballots, which should always be an option. Most of the voters are 50 and over, and many of them do not have computers or electronic devices, and they don't trust city staff to assist and therefore probably won't vote. According to the federal government, by offering municipal staff support for inputting one's votes, there's a strong potential for possible coercion and intimidation and definitely the risk of leaking confidential information. Worldwide research has shown that electronic voting isn't safe and secure, and it does not get the younger people to vote. In fact, the numbers have dropped. Before committing 130,000-plus of our Sanya tax dollars to accompany with an adverse financial history, voters should have been allowed to vote on this question instead of being blocked from the total process. I don't have specific data on the other municipalities, but I do know that Sanya made a very rushed decision on March 20th, 2017, to sign the contract with Intellivote, when under the provincial law, they still had six weeks to consult with their constituents and decide upon any alternative voting methods, but they chose not to, and removed us from our democratic choices altogether. Council simply announced it was a done deal. People assumed that paper ballots would still be there because the words of council were that they were introducing electronic voting, not that they were eliminating paper ballots. At this point, my friends, colleagues, and I created a county-wide ethics group and started collecting signatures in support of keeping the paper ballot option. Currently, we have over 2,000 signatures and are still collecting. Most people favor change and progress, but only if safety, security, confidentiality, and integrity are 100% assured so that they can all make a well-informed decision. The voters rely on those elected and hope they can be trusted to make the right decisions together with input from their communities. According to online documentation, there was a 4% kickback guaranteed by Intellivote if all municipalities went in together on this deal. I believe they were also convinced of an overall cost savings, but this method will probably be more costly than paper ballots for many reasons. Here are a few. The cost of scrutiny as in Sanya this year as compared with 2014 will be at least $6,000 to $8,000 more. The cost of a recount, if necessary, will be exorbitant. So far, nobody has any kind of disaster backup plan to be implemented if the election is hacked or if irregularities tip the balance in favor of a candidate who should not have been elected. On April 6th this year, I met with Sanya's city clerk to ask important questions, and I took someone along as a witness. I took someone along as a witness. The clerk's answers were the total opposite of everything warned of by the federal and provincial governments. Federally and provincially, Canadians will continue to cast their votes on paper ballots this year and next with no plans to move towards electronic voting. However, they are using new e-poll devices to try and reduce counting delays. Voters will still go to a private booth, check their choices on a paper ballot, then seal this in the envelope provided. The voter then places this in the slot on the new counting device where the results are scanned. A photo of this device was sent to me from Queen's Park and is included in the package you'll all receive later today. On April 29 this year, a strict list of Election Canada's election requirements were presented in a report from Ottawa by Bill Carey, parliamentary reporter. Here are a few of the most important points. All devices will be new, i.e. never before or after the election used. And yet, the Sarnia clerk told me that they will be using their own personal devices, iPhones, laptops, iPads. The software being used should not be encrypted and should not be web-based, i.e. stored on iCloud, and yet the Sarnia clerk told me that their software from Intellivote is encrypted and is stored on iCloud. Number three, the probability of moving electronic voting in Canada will remain 0% for a long time. Number four, that Canada's National Cryptologic Agency's public 2017 report outlined the specific security risks of moving to even just an electronic registration system. Quote, "If voter registration occurs online, adversaries could use cyber capabilities to pollute the database with fake voter records," they warned. They could also render the website inaccessible or have it display misleading information. Moreover, they could attempt to erase or encrypt the data and thereby make it unavailable. Alexander Essex, Assistant Professor Software Engineering at Western University, maintains that despite vendor assurances, there are no guarantees that online voting systems actually reflect the voter's true intentions. Quote, "An online election doesn't have the transparency. There is not an evidence-based election in the same way that a paper ballot is. And with this specific problem, it turns out that hand-counting paper ballots is the best solution we have." To avoid a massive breach of privacy and ensure that all results are accurate and no hacking has taken place, I respectfully ask that we all follow the rules and lead of both the federal and provincial governments of Canada. There is still plenty of time. We have until July 27 for anyone to declare that they are running for council, and paper ballots could not be printed until after that date anyway. If Lampton County's municipalities all listened to the people and the government requirements and warnings, it would be an incredible turning point for reinstilling the trust of the voters in those we have elected. It would be a true accomplishment and positive step towards improved economies and democracy. Thank you all once again for the opportunity to make this factual presentation. Later today, I'll be sending you all an electronic file with all the reports and my presentation for you to read and hopefully act upon. Thank you.
I don't have a question, but after listening to the speaker, I have a motion that I'd like to put forward. I think the essence of the issue, not to make this a Sarnia issue, is there's no fair public democratic process. And in Sarnia, this was imposed on people with no public input. So I've been in touch with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. And as all of you know in your own, in your own communities, there are a number of issues like budget, you must give 21 days' notice, and there must be a statutory public meeting. So I'm going to ask county council, and by the way, there is a review after the election of the Municipal Act and the election. So I'm going to ask county council on behalf of the municipalities in Ontario that it be put into the Municipal Act that there must be 21 days' notice given if the voting system is changing from paper ballots to other, another system, and that there be a statutory public meeting. It's already happening on many other issues. So to me, it seems to be a reasonable request to make so there is public input.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Not all of us in Lampton County are involved in this process. I just want to make that clear. There's only, I think there's three or four of us that are not part of the electronic voting process at this time, so this doesn't really apply for the whole county, only some of them.
Any discussion? Thank you, Margaret. Yes.
Vote to Mr. Deputy Warden.
Okay. And a recorded vote? If there's no other... Yeah. Could you, councillor Bradley, could you give us a little more, could you repeat that motion?
Simply that the county council recommends to the Minister of Municipal Affairs that the Municipal Act has a clause that any change to the voting system from paper ballots to any other system must require 21 days' notice to the public and a statutory public meeting. And that is no different than what we do on budget documents, I believe.
That's correct.
And all this is doing is recommending this to the Minister of Municipal Affairs after the election.
Any other discussion? Councillor Gillis?
Thank you, Deputy Warden McCharles and members of county council. So this is to apply to the next election, not to this election. A couple of things. When we're talking about the Municipal Act, and that is looking into how all municipalities in Ontario are conducting their elections, and there are several, if not well over 90, that are already involved in e-voting and have been involved in e-voting since 2003. So this in itself would ask the ministry to reimpose something that hasn't been in vogue in many municipalities for the past 15 years. I just put that out to people who are contemplating this. I would have appreciated a heads-up on a notice of motion so that we could do some more research if we need it individually, but nevertheless, there it is. It's on the table. But it's going to, this particular motion is going to apply to the next election when many other municipalities most likely will re-adopt e-voting. So bear in mind that e-voting has been in place in Canada since 2003, and particularly in Ontario, where there are currently, I believe, 94 municipalities, large municipalities and small, that are e-voting.
Councillor McGuglin?
Yes. If I could, Deputy Warden, a question to our clerk solicitor. In the most recent cycle of the review and changes to the Municipal Act, is there any evidence that that very matter was discussed? And what is the cycle of automatic review of the Municipal Act? And when are we likely to see any action on this, even if we were to make a motion? Does this have to become part of a global review, or would they contemplate changes? I think the Municipal Act was recently changed and approved. So what's the, what are the implications if we support this now? Thank you.
So two questions. On the first, with respect to Bill 68, which is the, what I would call substantial amendments to the municipal legislation. I don't recall anything addressing e-voting in that system or in the task force that was struck together to amend the Municipal Act, to modernize effectively the municipal legislation. So there's nothing there. On the second piece, in terms of amendments to the Municipal Act generally, there's really no timing or system in place. Typically, what happens is that there's requests, much like this, from municipal bodies or any other bodies for that matter, or residents, that go to the ministry, and the ministry will entertain the request itself and see fit based on its own reviews, its own interests, whether or not to introduce those amendments. But they don't necessarily have to go in a time cycle, which is, for instance, every year, four years, or whatever, maybe. It really depends on the ministry's agenda at that point in time.
Anything else? Councillor Napper?
Well, this was a decision of our council. I'd like to have the opportunity to take it back to our council. I don't, I think just to have it thrown out out here today, there was no, you know, notice of motion or anything like that there. I would like to take it back because I don't think, I feel comfortable on this issue, the amount of discussion we had at the time to, you know, change the, the way we're going.
Councillor Veen?
Thank you, Deputy Warden and members of county council. In one of those communities that decided that we were going to do the electronic voting, but it wasn't an easy process and it wasn't done overnight. So it took us at least three months to come up with that, and it was in open session and it was recorded through the minutes, and most of the people in town knew that we were doing it. So it wasn't something that we were trying to slide underneath the table, and I think it's going to be beneficial for Oil Springs because most people are either, you know, they're working in the fields or it's, for us, I think it's going to be a win-win because, as most of you know, when election time comes, it's Oil Springs that you're all waiting for to see the last part of the results. So that's why, the other reason we chose to do it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Bradley?
The whole point of the motion is being missed. First of all, there's an automatic review of the Election Act by the ministry after every election, and that was confirmed by the deputy minister. Secondly, it has nothing to do with communities that have chosen to go to electronic voting. All this motion does is ask that the ministry, in the review of the Election Act, bring forward a 21-day notice period for municipalities and a public meeting. Just means in the future, and I suspect after this election across Ontario, with all the issues that have been flagged by the experts on electronic voting, there will be municipalities that want to move from electronic, just as I think wealth is, back to paper. But that's immaterial. It is simply asking for this clause to be in there. I'm more than pleased, I mean, I brought it up because I just heard the speaker. I can just file this as a notice of motion if that gives comfort to others. It's not changing what you're doing. It's simply saying in the future, other communities and citizens in those communities will have the right to give their input. And it could be all, it could be either way. But I'm happy to pull it back and have it go to the July 4 meeting. That's fine with me to do that. And if the clerk needs more clarification, I can get that to him and talk to him about it.
So are you agreeing to take it back as a notice of motion? Okay. And the seconders agreeable to that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So that, that motion's withdrawn for now, and we come back as a notice of motion. Okay. Thank you. That's our presentations for today, and we'll move on in the agenda to the minutes of council for May 2nd. A motion to adopt those minutes would be in order. Councillor Cook, councillor Bruswitz, any discussion regarding the minutes? If not, all those in favor? And if there's any opposed, that's carried. Correspondence, we have one item of correspondence to receive and file motion. Councillor Marriott and councillor Hand. Councillor Bradley?
You know, when you read this letter, it's almost like one of those things that you get saying, this is your supplementary invoice. And if I'm talking about the FCM letter, I almost view it as a telemarketing scheme. It, to me, it does not make the organization look good. And I just, I find it distasteful to look at the content of it because it, it doesn't, again, it almost looks like a real invoice for services rendered. And I didn't, I didn't like the tactic. I don't think it reflects well on FCM. Editorial comment?
Any other comments regarding the motion? If not, all those in favor, receive and file. Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Items not requiring a motion, I guess we could entertain a motion to receive and file. Councillor Arnold and councillor McGuglin. Councillor Arnold?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I do have a question in regards to those minutes. I see that our CAO, Ron Van Horn, is seconding minutes here. I'm just wondering, is he a member at large? Is that why he can do that? Because if there's a need to have a representative there from this county council, I assume he's not it. And so I'd just like some clarification. I don't want a note today, but just for future, because he's not here and it's not fair. So maybe somebody can make a note and report back to us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion regarding the minutes of TSL? If not, all those in favor? Oh, sorry. Councillor Hand?
Just a comment. I am the member at large on that board, not Ron. Yes. It's where he's seconding the motion. Okay. I thought you were asking if it was someone other than Ron. Sorry. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And reports requiring a motion? We have a report from the Corporate Services Division regarding Integrity Commissioner's Report. Motion to adopt that report. Councillor Bradley? Seconder? Councillor Veen? Councillor Bradley?
The question was, there was five municipalities listed. It didn't have their names, which is five communities. And it mentioned in April, I think it was April 10th, that there was a survey done in municipalities. I don't recall that coming to Sarnia council. So are we one of them, or how was that? Who responded on behalf of the city?
Sorry. The question is, we went back in April and surveyed all communities to see if they wished to participate. We received five responses. So all of those, the survey itself, the request, went to all of your municipalities, to all the clerks of your municipalities. And we received five responses.
I don't recall it coming to Sarnia council for us to give our response. So I presume it was responded by the staff level? Was that the case? Do you know? Mr. Tebow?
We would have received responses from, from the clerks themselves, whether or not they went to county or to their respective councils behind those responses. I'm not privy to that.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Committee reports. The AM Committee, I'd call on councillor Arnold.
Thank you, Deputy Warden McCharles. I'd just like to present the morning minute meetings from morning. That stuff I'm supposed to present from May the 16th, the minutes of the Infrastructure Development Services, Public Health Services, Cultural Services and any other services that fit there within.
Okay. Thank you. Motion number one. Motion number three. Motion number four. Motion number five. Stop me at any time if you have any of these motions. Number six. Motion number seven. Motion number eight. Cultural Services, motion number nine. Number 10. Councillor McGuglin?
Yes. If I could, Deputy Warden McCharles, a question to staff with respect to the bookmobile service and the motion that was passed at committee. Were there any comments made and any discussions had in the community-led librarianship discussions about services actually desired by our constituents? Was there enthusiastic desire for a bookmobile versus this model? What was the feedback that we received, if anything, on that matter, or if it was even a part of it? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Through you, Deputy Warden. Thanks for the question. Yes, so both during the initial consultation with the 2013 Strategic Capacity Plan, the community-led model, and in the more recent Sarnia Libraries Review, we heard from the community and from staff as well, a real priority for outreach. And I think what this, this report was pointing to was the idea that the traditional bookmobile service, by the nature of the name, books was maybe limited in terms of its, its reach and what it was offering to the community. What we heard from the feedback from our residents was there is a desire for mobile library outreach. And whether that means it's, it's tech training, it may include outreach to homebound patrons who can't come to the library and access our service, so specific deliveries of books, that was one of the suggestions that was made by the community. Also looking at a more, a higher profile at public events as well, so using... So using the outreach, mobile outreach service to raise the profile of the library and its services within the community. So it was a touch point during the consultation, and there was several suggestions put forward. And the timing of, of the, the issues we've been having with the vehicle sort of prompted us to say, well, let's take a look at that. And over the next few months, define a new model for that, what we'll call now as mobile library service.
And Deputy Warden, if I could just follow up. Is there an intention to use this new mob, mobile vehicle and outreach service to cross-promote our museum services and our other cultural services and opportunities? Is it all going to be bundled into this mobile library that's going to do far more than just library services?
Through you again, Deputy Warden. Great question, and not only to extend the reach of our other cultural services, but we've also approached our other divisions within the county as well. So public, public health, as you know, social services, they have many outreach programs that perhaps we could look at, is there duplication there? Can we utilise that service to extend the reach and communicate information about those programs through this new mobile library outreach service? But also, to your point, looking to extend the reach of what, what we offer through the museums and the gallery as well. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Number 11, Counselor Arnold?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Just to reiterate a little bit from the cultural services people, there was enthusiastic support out in the community for the bookmobile-type services. And also, I just wanted to mention to council around item number eight, motion number eight, and that was what Dr. Renaday was referencing earlier on, for the seven pieces of mental health to endorse. And our committee did and made that recommendation. So with that, I will move these days' minutes.
Okay, seconder? Counselor McGugl? All those in favor? That's carried. And the afternoon committee, Counselor Hand?
I move for the adoption of the PM Committee minutes from the meeting of May 16th. Sorry, presenting. Sorry, presenting. Thank you.
Motion number one? Motion number two? Motion number three? Number four? Five? Motion number six, finance? Motion number seven? Motion number eight? Camera? Nine, 10, and 11, we're in camera. Motion number 12? And motion number 13, Counselor Hand?
Okay, now I move for the adoption of the minutes.
Seconder? Counselor Gillis? Any discussion? All in favor? That's carried, thank you. We have nothing tabled from previous meetings. We don't seem to have a notice of motion. Other business? Mr. Counselor Broad?
Thanks, Deputy Warden McCharles. Under other business, I have an issue that I'd like to bring up. And forgetting that August, we don't have a County Council meeting. And even reviewing our OP, section 4.2.4, there was a reference to a study that needs to be done. And I was wondering if, with County Council's approval, if we could have staff drop a detailed report of what exactly is required in the study, who approves it, all the information to do with the study that could come forward for our July meeting. Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Bruswitz. And is there any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion? That's carried, thank you. Any other, other business? Counselor Napper?
Yes, I see you had an advertisement at the very end, number 21, you're looking for a host for the annual council steak fry. I'd like to invite you out to Kamlaaki for a fish fry instead of steak. You know, if nobody else is wanting to do it.
All right, thank you, Counselor Napper. I'm sure we'll take you up on your invitation. Counselor Veen?
Thank you, Deputy Warden and members of County Council. As you know, we had that presentation on mental health this morning. We are having a fundraiser June 15th from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Oil Springs Legion. And we're going to have, we're going to have some hair cutting going on. And proud to say that my son's raised about $2,000. So...
Excellent.
Come on out.
Anything else? Counselor Arnold?
Well, thank you, Deputy Warden McCharles. I'd just like to publicly thank Margaret for all the work that she's done over the years. And, and I know when I was the warden, and it seems like a long time ago, she was invaluable to me. And as I worked through that whole process, and Margaret, just a heartfelt thanks. And I know that it's coming up soon and you'll have a chance to put your feet up. And I want, just wanted you to know how much I personally appreciated you, the work that you've done, your leadership throughout the county. And I know all of County Council will also join with me to do that. So thank you so much and all the best.
Thank you, Counselor Arnold. Anything else? Anyone else have any other business? Counselor McGugl?
Yes, Deputy Warden McCharles, just to advise council and Counselor Arnold back to the earliest beginnings of the relationship that was established and the relationship that grew between ourselves here in Lampoon County and the industrial heartland. At the FCM conference, we had an opportunity to meet one more time with a longstanding relationship with many new faces at that table. There's been a significant turnover of the group. But the shared concerns between our two areas continue. The importance of the, the oil and gas and affiliated industries and economic activity continue in both areas. And in terms of transitioning ourselves to bio and other innovations, I think there is a goodness in that partnership that we get together and we're able to share the best practices in both areas. So back to the time, I don't know how many years ago, when we went out to see the Shell Upgrader and to talk about the activities and the shared interests between the two. It's good to know that we've been able to continue that and continue the back and forth. So I just wanted to advise council of that.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, we'll move to the bylaws?
Thank you. It is moved by Counselor Hand and seconded by Counselor Gillis. The bylaws 19 and 20 of 2018, as circulated, be taken as read a first and second time.
Okay, all those in favor? That's carried. And a motion to read the bylaws a third time?
Thank you. This move by Counselor Gillis and seconded by Counselor Hand, that bylaw 19, bylaws 19 and 20 of 2018, as circulated, be taken as read a third time and finally passed.
Okay, all those in favor? That's carried. That looks like the next thing is probably the adjournment. But I, just before I say that, I'd just like to say thank you for being gentle and kind to the deputy warden today. It's been a fairly quick and, and easy, easy council meeting. So thank you. So motion to adjourn? Counselor Marriott, Counselor Hand? Oh, did you have something?
Oh, sorry. I'm a little delayed. I just wanted to, I feel remiss that maybe someone already said it, but I wanted to thank the people at the museum for allowing us to meet there for our committee meetings in May. That was a nice road trip and a chance to see the refurbishment, so it was appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. So you're moving adjournment, Counselor Marriott, a seconder? Counselor Veen? All those in favor of adjournment? And we'll stand for O Canada.